Our moderator today is Peter Steinberger. Peter is professor of political science and dean of faculty at Reed College. He's been at Reed since 1977. He received the Burlington Northern Award in recognition of distinguished teaching at Reed, and served as Reed's acting president in 2001. In addition to teaching, he has served as department chair numerous times. He previously taught at the University of Denver and the University of California in Riverside. Peter is also vice president of the Western Political Science Association and a member of the editorial advisory board for Review of Politics. And I am waiting for Peter.
I'm here.
Oh, Peter, there you are. I was panicking because you weren't sitting down there. Welcome.
Well, thanks so much for the opportunity to be here again today. Let me begin by outlining the rules. As usual, the rules are largely a matter of time. Our trusty timekeeper today is Greg McPherson, and he and I will try to ensure that the rules are strictly obeyed. This may at times be a bit unsettling and frustrating, and I'm sorry for that, but in an event of this kind, I think both the fact and perception of fairness is essential, and I think that means making sure that we all follow the rules as faithfully as we can. Because of the number of candidates, we will have a slightly different format today. This forum will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement. The candidates will give their opening statements in alphabetical order. Following the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions suggested in advance of this meeting by City Club members. A subcommittee of the City Club's program committee composed the final set of questions. These are the only questions which will be asked today; there will be no questions from the floor. We will rely on the judgment of our distinguished panel of City Club members seated right over here to decide whether or not the questions have indeed been answered by the candidates. If two or more of these members raise their cards indicating that they feel a question has not been answered, I will restate the question and ask the candidate to reply again. On our panel today, we have Elaine Kogan, Gwen Milias, and Fran Storrs. Following the City Club's questions, each candidate will make a two-minute closing statement. Please be respectful of the candidates, and please hold all applause until the end of the program. Four candidates. Emily Boiles is running one of Portland's inaugural publicly financed campaigns. She is small business and nonprofit consultant who specializes in locating new sources of funding and resources for local programs. Born in Brooklyn, New York, and raised in Anchorage, Alaska, Ms. Boiles landed in Portland in 1984 to study at Portland State University. Her major career products have included setting national standards for representing payee programs for vulnerable populations, funding shelters, food programs, employment programs, and a medical clinic. Ginny Burdick currently serves in the Oregon Senate, where she chairs the Senate Judiciary Committee. She began her career covering local and state government as a news reporter for the Associated Press. Since then, she has worked as a public policy and communications advisor for candidates and organizations. Her past public service includes local boards of the Nature Conservancy, NARAL, Emmanuel Hospitals Council of Associates, the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission, and Portland's Fire and Police Disability and Retirement Fund. She earned degrees from the University of Puget Sound and University of Oregon. Dave Lister graduated from Cleveland High School and spent one year at what was then Southern Oregon College in Ashland before returning to Portland to work and write. For some 12 years, Mr. Lister served in various positions, from floorsweeper to general manager at Associated Wholesale Hardware before co-founding a software development company called Integrated Data Concepts. Among his activities in the community, Mr. Lister has been involved with the city's Small Business Advisory Council and writes a monthly column for Brainstorm Northwest Magazine entitled "The East Side Guy: Addressing Concerns of Public Policy in Portland." Eric Sten is serving his third term as city commissioner, currently responsible for Portland's Bureau of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services and the Bureau of Housing and Community Development. He also has special assignments to direct Portland programs on energy policy and global warning. Commissioner Sten began his career in public service as chief of staff for now-retired Portland Commissioner Gretchen Miller-Kafuri. Commissioner Sten attended Stanford as a National Merit Scholar and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree. So can I ask the candidates to now come to the stage? And we will begin with a three-minute statement from Ms. Boiles.
Good morning. This election process reminds me a little bit of my first viola lesson with Van Hodge, former first violist of the Oregon Symphony. When I went into Van's office, he had me play a few pieces from my favorite Schubert arpeggio, and looked at me, and he said, "I never let anyone in my office; it's just raw." But then he looked at my instrument that I was playing on, and he said, "But I realize, Emily, it has nothing to do with your ability; it has to do with the instrument you're playing on." Why haven't you heard of Emily Boiles before? Primarily, the reason is because I have, in my last 20-some years in Portland, quietly working to bring new monies into Portland in a way that relieves you, the taxpayer, from public burden. My first public policy mentor was Dr. Glenn A. Olds, former ambassador to the United Nations, president of Alaska Pacific University, Kent State University, and one of the architects of the War on Poverty. Glenn hired me at the age of 14 as a paid development intern, and what I learned from him was how to get people to give me money who didn't know that they wanted to give it, and how to find out how much money they needed to be relieved of. On behalf of Portland, I have relieved the National Community Action Program Fund, the Christian Community Health Fellowship Fund, the U.S. Department of Justice, the National Council of Independent Living Centers, FEMA, the Social Security Administration, and a host of private businesses and donors and faith-based organizations to effect change in Portland. That change has resulted in a free medical clinic in Portland, a triage services that kept us within the bounds of our consent agreements with the U.S. Department of Justice on behalf of people with mental illness and developmental disabilities, the Royal Palm Hotel and jobs programs. I spent a term studying with Paul Samuelson, the economist, and quickly learned that trickle-down economics means absolutely nothing when it trickles down to the people who don't have anything, even a drop of water, left. I spent terms studying with Harlan Ellison, the writer and futurist, who taught me that I needed to turn away from my upper-class upbringing and walk and work and struggle alongside the peri people that I want to disturb. I moved here to study under Ben Padro, who was the first person who told me about City Club. It took me 20 years, but I finally took his advice and joined. Ben Padro also told me not to go right into politics, but instead to learn some sound management skills and make my mistakes and my successes elsewhere, and that I did, working for First Interstate Bank, Standard Insurance Company, and many other successful organizations, leading up to being the executive director of the Slavic Services Program. I'm running today because of a comment that was made to me when I made a presentation in Puerto Rico two years ago, and I was told that I was a woman from the Third World state. This was a Puerto Rican telling a Portlander that we were from the Third World, and it was time to change that. It was time now for Portland to trade up to that instrument to better matches its abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burdick, you have three minutes for your opening statement.
Good afternoon. It is a real pleasure to be here today to discuss Portland's future. I know it's customary and ordinary to open a political speech with a humorous anecdote. The problem is that these are not ordinary times, or I would not be running. Things are out of control at City Hall. There are serious problems, a lot of them self-inflicted, like the Water Bureau, the tram, the failed effort to buy PGE, and it is going to take people with serious skills and a record of success to get things back on track. If you want to know what someone will do, ask what they have done. I am here to share with you what I have done and what I plan to do for Portland as a member of your city council. When I first started this campaign last fall, I was clear about my reasons. The city council and Commissioner Sten in particular have fallen prey to government-by-pet project. Buying utilities, diverting scarce taxpayer dollars into political campaigns, covering reservoirs, wasting millions on new water billing systems that still don't work, the list goes on. The voters I talked to at House parties, public forums, and on the doorstep agree with me, but there's an elephant in the room. That elephant is our precious public school system, which is on the brink of failure. Even though education is not in the city charter, it is the top issue on the voters' minds, and for good reason. Our public school system is the heart and soul of our city. It is the city council's business, even if it isn't the city council's job. I want to return the city council to its core priorities: public safety, roads, parks, and affordable housing, but we must add schools to that list. While it's easy to talk about priorities, it is more difficult to stick to those priorities. How often have we heard politicians say "schools first" and then vote to divert money away from schools and into other programs? It's happening right now on the city council. Putting schools first means other things, like taxpayer-financed campaigns come second, no matter how much we like them. I have a strong record of putting schools first. I have consistently opposed tax breaks for corporations. On the Stand for Children website, where legislators are rated on how many tax breaks they approved, you will see me listed dead last in the Senate. I believe the corporate kicker must be repealed outright, and the money given to education. I have voted for every tax increase related to schools at the state, county, and voter level. In other words, I put my vote where my rhetoric is. Portlanders want to see their city council return to the basics. They are tired of the anti-business rhetoric from City Hall and from Commissioner Sten's office in particular. They are ready for a change, and I stand before you today to offer just that change. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lister, you have three minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank the City Club for including me, and I want you to know, I am really glad to be here. The debate we are going to have over the next few months will be the most significant debate over the future of Portland, in my memory. I think we need to acknowledge and engage in the debate that we really need to have. It's not about what's in our pockets. It's not about our favorite TV characters. It's about the status quo in Portland and whether we can continue to accept it. Two powerful entities are locked in a struggle to acquire the greatest share of our tax dollars, and in the wake of that struggle, the folks who pay the bills, the taxpayers, continue, year after year, to accept that we must live with fewer police, more potholes, 911 wait times, and failing schools. And on the one hand, an ever-growing city bureaucracy requires more and more. That bureaucracy now collects and spends $2.3 billion annually, with a full third of that money being spent on services it provides itself. The average city employee's salary and benefit package is approaching $75,000, while nearly a third of the households in Portland languish at subsistence level. On the other hand, powerful development interests, along with an unrestrained Portland Development Commission, have placed half our assessable property into some sort of urban renewal scheme, making real estate speculation Portland's predominant industry. And I wonder how much those condos will be worth when the tax abatements run out. And when those two forces come together, what do we get? After a sham process of public input, during which the citizens are listened to but never heard, after the backroom deals have been made, we get the tram, we get PGE Park, we get a floating walkway which ended up costing more than $400 per inch. We never get to vote on it, but we always get to pay for it. One of my opponents in this race has used to her advantage a quote from another of the opponents, and that quote is, "No one was minding the store." What has not been asked is the logical follow-up question, "Who's been tapping the till?" Of all the words used by politicians in Portland, the favored word is sustainability. I believe that this debate is about the status quo and whether it is sustainable, and I submit to you that it is not. Thank you, and thank you again for having me today.
Mr. Sten, you have three minutes for your opening statement.
This is a defining moment. I know it's human nature to focus on our problems, and it's a political year, but let's be clear: Portland is a great place. We know this. People are moving here in record numbers, investing their lives, their resources, because they see the promise of Portland. I see in them, as I see in all of us, an opportunity to make this great city better. Portland is the place that takes on the problems that other people have given up on. We are restoring endangered fish, preserving record amounts of green space. In 2005, just the first year of a community-wide effort to help the homeless, we had 660 chronically homeless people come off of the street and into a home of their own. During the last 10 years, we had the 10th fastest-growing economy in this country, and did I mention, we are getting the big money out of city politics. Portland is a great place, but we are facing some critical challenges. Thanks to our legislature, our schools are at the brink of disaster. Skyrocketing housing prices are pushing many out. A city that prides itself on determining its own destiny is watching itself be bought up by out-of-state companies that don't care about us. Sometimes the loss is sentimental, like Norm Thompson. Other times, it is a disaster, like our experience with Enron. The New York Times reported to us last week that PGE and Enron are a new kind of urban pioneer. They've devised a way to avoid taxes that is now being copied by conglomerates all across the country. $900 million of your tax dollars has been spirited away. Let's be honest. There are some people in this community that are profiting from these trends, and the rest of us are paying the price. I understand that they don't want to be scrutinized, and I certainly get why they're opposed to me. I'm disappointed that they're using cheap, tired, political tactics, cynical, but I am not deterred. I believe that Portland is a place where the truth still matters. We know what we want in this community: a place that puts people first, people of all incomes, all lifestyles, great schools, a strong and just economy, one built on a restored environment. Every single child in Portland should grow up in a beautiful, safe, nurturing neighborhood like the one I'm from in northeast Portland. Make no mistake about it, though: keeping what we love will take hard work, new ways of thinking, and resolve. We cannot rely on the strategies that we used for the last 30 years if we want to compete in today's world. As I have on the environment, on schools, on housing, I will fight for you. There's a lot that will be said today, but I want to begin by asking you directly for your support and your resolve to make Portland everything that it can be.
We will now move to the portion of the program where I will ask the questions prepared in advance by City Club members. The candidate to whom the question is directed will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. Each of the other candidates will then have 45 seconds to respond. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. First question for Mr. Sten. We have recently learned of all the overlapping construction that could paralyze traffic and pedestrian movement downtown for the foreseeable future. Given the pressures that Portland downtown businesses are already facing, was the conjunction of the current construction projects, along with the impending overhaul of the bus mall, a product of lack of planning coordination? Was the city council aware of the overlap? And what, if anything, would you expect the council to do to correct the situation before we achieve full gridlock?
Well, there's a variety of projects. The biggest one is the rebuild of the Transit Mall, and that was supported aggressively by the downtown business community. In fact, they're paying for a solid chunk of it. They also are working with us on a strategy, and it will have to be a strategy we will need to cooperate. One of my themes today is we have to work together to solve problems, not point fingers. And in order to fix this, we'll need people working together, going to different routes. We're going to ask more of you to get out of your car. We have budgeted a strong amount of money in next year's budget to start a public education campaign, and we will get through it, and downtown will be rebuilt and much stronger once it's done. And yes, I think it's the product of business and government working together, and frankly, it's those types of public investments that have made us as strong as we have, and we should be proud of those.
Two of our delegates have said you have not answered the question. You have 30 seconds to answer again.
Well, I don't...I thought I answered it.
Repeat the question. Was the council aware of the overlap, and what, if anything, would you do to expect the council to...what, if anything, would you expect the council to do to correct the situation before we achieve full gridlock?
Yeah, when I said that we had planned it with business community, that was implying that we were aware of it, and we are...so we did know what was going on, and when I was mentioning, we have a public outreach campaign that's funded and underway to try and work with people. I don't believe any of the projects you're discussing are going to change the timeline. I think Trimeste's moving forward on it. So yes, we were aware, and yes, there's a plan underway.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds.
I think it's an absolutely terrible idea to tear up downtown at this point. The fact that NATO Parkway was let go so long that it had to be rebuilt rather than resurfaced, the fact that our downtown retailers are finally just beginning to see some recovery from the recession, and the fact that we have several other major gridlock-creating construction projects on the docket, it's a bad idea. I don't think we should do it. I think we should put it on hold, and I think we should put the Burnside Cooch couplet on hold as well.
Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I think the bad planning and overlap is a symptom of a much bigger problem, and that is, our private sector economy is fraying in Portland, and it's fraying from inattention. We are losing 1,000 jobs from the Portland area because we are losing the public-private partnership that always exists in the Portland I grew up in, and the spirit of cooperation between City Hall and the business community. I want to restore that when I get elected to the council.
Ms. Boiles, you have 45 seconds to respond.
There's a number of things the city council should do to deal with this particular issue. First and foremost, we should not build the bus mall. It's not safe for people with disabilities and mobility issues to cross the streets, and that's, I think, an integral part of this particular process, because people can't go to businesses if they can't get there. Secondly, we need to support the work of Flush, which is a local research organization, so that people feel like they can come to downtown and use public facilities. Thirdly, we need to take a look at the costs, and we need to call into accountability our city for not making sure that we are using cost-effective manners. For example, it's approximated as about $45,000 per bus stop on the new bus mall, and quite frankly, I don't know about you, but I don't want to pay $45,000 for a bus stop.
Question for Mr. Lister. Mayor Potter has recently enlisted a charter review commission to evaluate, among other things, Portland's commission form of government. What are the advantages and disadvantages of that form of government, and what is your opinion about whether we should keep it? You have 60 seconds to respond.
Yes, I'm familiar with that. I actually volunteered to serve on Mayor Potter's Charter Review Commission, and I was passed over. I think our commissioner form of government is not good, and it is, in fact, one of the reasons why I'm in this race. I think that the city council should serve as a board of directors, and I am in favor of a city-manager government system.
Two panelists would like you to respond again. You have 30 seconds to respond again. What are the advantages and disadvantages of that form of government, and what is your opinion about whether we should keep it?
Of our current form of government?
Commission form, yes.
Oh, commission form. Well, the disadvantage clearly is that politicians are expected to be managers. They're good at politicking, but they're not real good at managing. I think that's the disadvantage. The advantage is, of course, you do have accountability with the taxpayer because the managers are elected.
Thank you. Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I'm running for the job that exists today, but the longer I spend in this campaign, the more I realize the limitations of our current system, which is, as Mr. Lister described. I believe that my skills working collaboratively in the legislature will help to unite the council and work collaboratively between the council members and avoid some of the silo thinking that we have on the council now, but I want to look very seriously at switching to a city-manager form of government.
Ms. Boiles, you have 45 seconds to respond.
I support the current form of commission government because I think it makes very clear that people can specialize in knowledge bases throughout the city, whether it's around utility issues or if it's around the arts. However, there's a caveat to that, and that's the disadvantage, is that we don't have clear accountability as citizens as to what we need to expect as measurable results from our current commissioners. So I suggest that we keep the current commission of government, however, we add to that a very visible way of measuring the results of commissioners through each part of their term.
Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Well, I have an open mind and want to hear what the commission says. My bias is to keep what we have, but to make some changes. I think Portland's unique. I'm the one person saying, "I really love our city. I love where it's going." Yes, we have things to address, and I don't think it's an accident that we have a different form of government. Gretchen Miller-Kafuri started the focus on affordable housing because she was the housing commissioner. Charlie Hales and Earl Blumenauer brought us the streetcar because you had a transportation commissioner. That type of work doesn't get done in most big cities where the mayor and city manager control everything. I think you could give the mayor perhaps a veto, maybe a line-item veto that the council has to override with four votes, or something like that, and I do think the Portland Development Commission charter needs a complete overhaul, and I'm going to propose one.
Question for Ms. Burdick. Over the past few legislative sessions during which you have served, the state budget has required Portland-area school districts either to implement deep spending cuts or to find local funding options. How do you see the city's role in funding schools? Do you support the council's current proposal to contribute $10 million to local schools? You have 60 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I support the council's current proposal to devote $10 million for schools and would support a higher number than that. The voters have made it very difficult for the legislature to do its legal and moral duty for our schools. Numerous ballot measures, from Measure 5 to mandatory sentencing, to Measure 37, have drained off revenue from the state general fund that should be used for schools. Given that, I think it's the duty of every legislator, and I have tried to do this while the whole time I was in Salem, to put schools first at all times, even though it means making very, very difficult choices.
Panelists would like you to answer the question again.
The city's role. I apologize.
City's role.
The city's role...the city realistically is going to have an ongoing role. I think it's not accurate to say that the measures we're taking to help our schools are temporary. I think we need to sit down at the table and realize that we are going to have to have long-term strategies to have a larger role for the city to play in supporting our schools.
Ms. Boiles, you have 45 seconds to respond.
It's the responsibility of our schools to produce people who are able to enter into small businesses and living wage jobs, and that's not happening. And I think it's a bad example for us to tell children that we...if someone makes a big mistake, that we're going to give them money anyway, give them their allowance anyway. I support with caution giving that money to the schools, however, what we need to make a clear message to the schools is this: we must produce measurable results. Portland did not make measurable results. The outlying schools, as well as the private schools that pay in most cases less per student than Portland does, are making those measurable results find some other places and some other models to use, and we need to send that message clearly.
Thank you. Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Well, first, it's time for the legislators to come up with some new ideas. That's their job, by constitution, by vote of the people, by everything else, and the Democrats have to stop hiding behind these arguments. They own the governor's office and the Senate, and we need some new ideas from them or some new people down there. Until they do that, I will continue to fight every day that I'm there to get more city resources from the city to the schools. Over $100 million of city resources has gone to the schools since I was on the council. I'm working on a plan to help take over their maintenance department, and a less direct but very strong strategy to help families buy homes next to schools so that we can get more pupils into them. We will keep fighting, but let's not pass the We will keep fighting, but let's not pass the buck. It's the legislature's job, and it needs to get done.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Well, the strict answer, I think I lost, there we go. The strict answer by charter is the city has no responsibility for the schools, but clearly, we can't let the schools fail. The schools, Portland's schools problem is a business problem. It's a problem called diminishing market share. And as folks don't want to give up their neighborhood schools, I think the answer short-term is for the city to enter into a partnership with the schools to utilize those underutilized school buildings for perhaps community, or rather, policing or other governmental, city governmental agencies.
Question for Ms. Boils. Some Portland businesses complain that the city's business license and income taxes are too high, unfair, and uncompetitive. Is this a real problem? What changes, if any, would you work to enact?
Absolutely, this is a problem.
Seconds to respond.
Absolutely, this is a problem. If you go simply to the Portland's living room, Pioneer Square, and you see that there's business space that's been open and vacant for almost two years now, you know that the high business taxes are a problem. And I believe that the solution is, is that we need to invest in small businesses. We need to not tax more people, but we need to bring in other resources that are available from the federal government and from private foundations that are accessible, are being offered to Portland, and Portland has turned them away. And that's the bottom line, is we need to take those resources and we need to use them. We need to empower programs such as the Title V programs for senior jobs, which are accessible and the city hasn't used. And Eric doesn't have any Title V people in his office, and Ginny doesn't have any Title V senior workers in her office either. Those won't cost the city or the county a dime to be able to develop those resources to bring those monies in. And there's a definite plan. The federal government has given us an answer, and we, as Portland, have not taken it.
Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. A re-hall of the business taxing structure makes sense, but much of what you read in the paper that's being proposed as that is a backdoor way to help the big interests at the expense of the small interests and in their name. Business needs to pay a fair share of the tax, and that share that's been paid in the state is dwindling over the last 10 or 15 years, and somebody's got to say it. Just cutting taxes on business will not bring us a great economic climate. A great economic climate is based on fair taxes, predictability, good infrastructure, and a great education system. A business overhaul tied to those issues will have my vote. The soundbite politics that I'm faced with will never have my vote.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds to respond.
The problem with the city's business income, business license fee, rather, and the county's combined business income tax is one of fairness and equitability. Many, many businesses are able to avoid the tax. Small businesses, closely-held businesses, businesses that provide living wage jobs, pay an exorbitant amount of tax. What we need to do is go to a fee-based system modeled after Clackamas and Washington counties so that we become competitive with those counties and retain those small businesses.
Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you very much. Portland is a small business town. 80% of the jobs in Portland are provided by small businesses. We must have policies that make businesses feel welcome and allow them to be successful. When I talk to business people, their primary concerns are the same concerns that everyone has. They want good schools, they want good streets, they want livable neighborhoods, and they want a fair tax structure. This tax structure has problems. It needs work. We need to get people around the table, including the business people who get the benefits from the taxes, and figure out changes to make.
Question for Mr. Sten. While there seems to be growing consensus about how to reform the retirement portion of the fire and police disability and retirement system, proposed reforms to the disability system seem to be more controversial. This winter, both City Club and the Independent Review Committee appointed by the city council recommended that the city terminate the standalone disability system and roll firefighters and police officers into the city workers' compensation system. Do you support that recommendation? What are the chief impediments to the proposed reforms? Are there other reforms to the disability system that council should consider? You have 60 seconds to respond.
Great. To make change, you have to get the parties involved, and I may support that recommendation after we do the next step, which I demanded and stopped it from going to the ballot because we had not involved the people, the firefighters and the police officers, in discussing that proposal. What I'd prefer to do and am proposing is that we take the elements of the City Club's recommendation, not the structure, and say, "We want an independent board, unlike the one that's been there. We want independent medical review and all of the elements that would make a good system." Give the folks who are going to be affected a chance to make a counterproposal, then pick the system that best fits the elements, rather than saying, "We don't like this, we're just going to move you over to workers' comp," which many people believe could have some problems. If workers' comp is the best answer, I believe, based on my relationship with real men and women who are going to oppose this measure, that they will support moving, but not if it's pushed through down their throat. These are the folks that are protecting us every day. They will accept a fair system. They're fair people, but they have not been given that chance. And so I probably will support the recommendation, but not until the firefighters and police have a chance to look at it.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Well, Eric and I are going to be in agreement on this one. The system has to be reformed, and you do have to have buy-in from the folks involved. One of the proposals I put forward is that the disability not be allowed to ensue until such time as an officer's sick leave is exhausted. Currently, we have officers out on lengthy disabilities that continue to accrue sick leave for months and years.
Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I support the City Club recommendation, as much for the benefit of the people in uniform as for anyone else. Right now, under the current system, there is no incentive for the Fire Bureau and the Police Bureau to hire these people back and to get them well quickly so they can come back. They need to be at the table when these decisions are made, I believe, and they need to have a system that takes into account the unique parts of their business. This business of public safety breaks people's bodies, and sometimes it breaks their minds. It sometimes poisons their blood. And whatever we do in the disability system needs to take account of those unique circumstances.
Ms. Boils, you have 45 seconds to respond.
For once, Ginny and I are in agreement, but I would take it one step further. And again, we have federal programs we're not accessing on behalf of the fire and police disability system, and that's through the Rehabilitation and Service Act of 1965, which requires people to have access to appropriate services. Our system now is not making sure that people who are in the fire and police fields, when they become disabled, that they have access to the federally-funded Independent Living Center right here in Portland, Oregon, so they can find peers, they can find ways to get reasonable accommodation, and they can get back to work. It's imperative that we connect our disability system into the federal vocational rehabilitation system and the Centers for Independent Living nationally.
Question for Mr. Lister. Commissioner Sten spearheaded the city's adoption of a 10-year plan to end homelessness that focuses on providing housing first for the chronically homeless. Do you agree with this approach to homelessness? If not, how would you approach ending homelessness? You have 60 seconds to respond.
I don't agree wholeheartedly with the approach. My concern is, and I have a lot of experience with this from a couple of teenage sons who used to hang out downtown a lot. Portland is being identified up and down the West Coast as the place to go for homeless youth. If we make it easier to be homeless in Portland, won't that exacerbate the problem? In my view, there's people that need help. We need to fund our mental health services. We need to help those who need help. But those who choose homelessness as a lifestyle, I don't think that that's our responsibility.
Two panelists think you haven't answered the question. Do you agree with this approach to homelessness? If not, how would you approach ending homelessness?
So I got the no part right, but the yes part I didn't get.
30 seconds.
I don't have an answer.
Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I support Commissioner Sten's program to end homelessness. I think it's a good program. I think we need to do a better job of dividing the homeless population into the categories that they exist. You have everything from kids coming in from Lake Oswego, because they think it's fun to panhandle, to seriously mentally ill, to people with serious drug addiction problems. I think we need to develop strategies to deal with each of those unique populations and to deal very, very aggressively with panhandlers, because panhandlers are increasing the perception of a dangerous downtown, and we just can't have that.
Ms. Boils, you have 45 seconds to respond.
I don't support the plan, and this is why. 10 years ago, we had another plan that Mr. Sten was involved in for a 10-year plan to end homelessness, and that didn't work. In fact, I was community action commissioner at the time and told him at that time that that would not work. Secondly, the report regarding the recent homeless connect to the city council, it was said that not one person was housed as a result of the most recent homeless connect, after we dumped all kinds of public dollars into that. And thirdly, and most importantly, the people that are most important in that process are not at the table. The Jewish family services are not at the table. The Muslim community center is not at the table. The 60 or 70 community groups in Portland that provide housing, food, clothing, and shelter to individuals who are homeless on a regular basis that are part of communities of faith have not been invited to the table.
Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
I do support the plan. But, and seriously, I want to thank hundreds of people that have helped get those 660 people off the street. We did not have a lot more money, and we were disgraced by what was going on. So a bunch of us came together, led by people like the CEO of Providence, Russ Danielson, and we came up with new ideas, like Providence Now, for example, buys spaces from Central City Concern. So when they treat a homeless person, which happens over and over and over again in the emergency room, they go to a room. They were getting discharged back to the street. We're bringing these folks back into our community. It's not only the right thing to do, and I would do it for no other reason than that, it's also cost-effective. You have no idea how much money we spend cycling people through, and we're going to change that right here, right now. Well, over 10 years.
Question for Ms. Burdick. Last week, OHSU hired a lawyer, and its spokesperson asserted that the city is legally and contractually obligated to build a South Waterfront tram regardless of where the funding comes from. There was a proposal on the table to increase the city's contribution from $3.5 million to $9.4 million. Would you support that proposal? If not, what should the city do in order to meet its legal obligations and act as a good steward of public money? You have 60 seconds to respond.
Okay. I can't make specific recommendations on that proposal because I'm not at the table. However, I believe very strongly that the developers need to put up some money, and that money needs to offset what the city pays. A person who's familiar with this issue but not involved with it told me the other day, he said, "We have two choices here. We can pay $55 million and get a tram, or we can pay $50 million and get no tram." The city has a commitment. The part of that project that was managed by OHSU is on time and on budget. The part that was managed by the city is a mess, and the city needs to fix it, and they have an obligation to do so.
Ms. Boils, you have 45 seconds to respond.
I'm not a lawyer. Don't claim to be a lawyer. Don't play a lawyer on TV, but I would say, "Let's fight the OHSU lawsuit." We are putting good money after bad, and the community can't afford it. Are we going to fund our schools? Are we going to fund our tram? And we have to, the other part of that is, we need to now take into accountability and call on the carpet the people in the city who did make those decisions, the managers, the PDC that has been funding a great deal of this project. We need to call them on the carpet, and maybe, just maybe, we need to even hold them personally, financially responsible.
Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
So you've got to talk straight, and you've got to be willing to draw a line occasionally. You would not know from Senator Burdick's answer that OHSU was one of her clients. She was in charge of marketing the tram to business owners, and that the line that this is all the city's fault is a PR piece that's being put out in missives all across the city from the firm that she works on. It's not true. The city was asked to turn over the management to an independent board that was controlled by developers in OHSU, and we did. But I'm not going to blame people for it. I'm just saying that's what happened. We have $3.5 million in it, and that's what I think it's worth to the citizens. I think it'll be a great piece. I firmly support having a tram. It's just sometimes you have to draw a line, and the one I drew, which Ginny took today, she criticized us for when we did it. So what side are you on? I'm saying that's enough money.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Well, I'm in the fortunate position of neither having voted for the tram nor advocated for the company that wanted it. And I'm scared of heights, so I'm not going to ride it. I'll tell you right now, you're going to give me three question marks on this. Here's what I think needs to happen. If I were in office, I would call upon City Auditor Blackmer to perform a full and independent audit of all the construction costs and all the operating costs. And if we find out that it's cheaper for the taxpayer to kill it, we kill it. If it's cheaper for the taxpayer to keep it, we keep it.
The final question is for Ms. Boils. Clearly, one of the underlying issues in this race is the city's attempt to purchase Portland General Electric. The city is now engaged in an investigation of PGE rates. If elected, would you continue this investigation? How many more resources should go into these efforts? You have 60 seconds to respond.
PGE is not the only utility in Portland. We also have Pacific Power, and we have a water, we have a water system, and we have Northwest Natural Gas. I think it is absolutely obscene that we are focusing all of our energies on one company. Pacific Power also has major issues. Pacific Power also serves some of Portland's poorest people, and we haven't called Pacific Power onto the carpet. I think it's imperative that we take a look as a whole at the utility system and that the Commissioner of Utilities, and that happens to be this particular position, revamps the entire system and makes some final decisions as a whole package. No, I don't support putting any more money and seeking more money into just PGE.
Mr. Sten, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Our efforts on PGE have been money well-spent. We stopped Texas Pacific, who would have ripped us off and sold it very quickly. We are fighting right now. We do want Enron to go. The tagline also coming from Ginny's place of work, PGE is another one of their clients, is we want to just get away from Enron. We could not agree more, but not with our $900 million, folks. Let's try and find a way, and we're going to keep fighting, and I'm going to keep fighting. And if you do not want somebody to keep going after the Enrons of the world, you should not vote for me.
Mr. Lister, you have 45 seconds to respond.
I do not support a city purchase of PGE, and I'll tell you why. Commissioner Sten was gracious enough to invite me to one of the early meetings on his plan, and I felt the business model was faulty. The idea was to provide everyone a 10% rate reduction due to the fact that the new utility would not have to pay federal taxes. But at the same time, the city was going to bond $1.3 billion and expect to pay those bonds off through operating profits, and they would have to hire a company to run it to do that. The business model didn't work for me. I didn't think those bonds would be paid by profits, and that's why I opposed the plan.
Ms. Burdick, you have 45 seconds to respond.
Thank you. Portland has already wasted millions in the failed effort to buy PGE and is continuing to waste money trying to become a branch of the Public Utility Commission. We have a state agency that's charged with making these analyses and imposing these penalties if they are warranted. Let the PUC do it. I voted for the bill in the legislature to require, to prohibit PGE and other utilities from collecting taxes that they do not pay. This program, this problem has been solved into the future. The question is, what's at the end of the pipe for the rate payers and the taxpayers in this effort? I can't see the payoff. I want it to stop now.
We will now move to the final portion of the program, three-minute closing statements from each candidate. I would again ask the audience to withhold its applause until the end of the program. In the closing statement, we have asked each candidate to address the following questions. If you had your choice, which bureaus would you choose to have in your portfolio? Why? And what would you do with those bureaus? We will begin with Mr. Sten. You have three minutes.
Well, it's a question that I've been asked by two different mayors, and I told them both I'd like the Portland Development Commission. It turned out neither took me up on that offer, but I've still been focused on changing PDC. We need development that directly benefits neighborhoods and citizens. That's why next week, my review of PDC's budget will end with a specific proposal to immediately transfer an additional $5 million to the public schools, to work more aggressively with small businesses, save more at-risk low-income buildings, help families buy homes near schools, as we talked about, and get much more serious about supporting environmental technology, open-source software, and other businesses that are merging and that we can profit from as a community from our strengths. So you don't need bureaus to make a difference, in my opinion, but some of the things I've done with the bureaus, I have. As your Commissioner in Charge of Environmental Service, I led the first urban effort to respond to the endangered to the endangered species listing. We've done that in a way that helps the economy. I led an effort to remap the floodplain on Johnson Creek, a successful approach using the community that nobody thought could be done. As your Fire Commissioner, I have not been satisfied with that bureau's ninety-percent approval rating. We've made it more diverse, more efficient, and we've implemented strategies that will speed up response times to critical emergencies in the years ahead. As your Water Commissioner, I led a successful effort to protect the Bull Run from logging. We increased the low-income discount and made water pricing more fair for business by getting rid of expensive service fees in favor of usage charges. And yes, as you've heard today, I was in charge, and you knew anyway, when the computer system went wrong. I hope you will give me some credit on that for how we responded when things got tough. We recovered the full cost of the system from the company that sold it to us, and because we did the hard work of cutting costs rather than passing on the losses from unpaid bills, residential rates went up an average of one-point-nine percent during the six years that I ran the Water Bureau. As the point person on energy issues, however, I have battled a very different kind of fiasco with the utility, Enron's dishonest effort to keep nine-hundred-million dollars of your money. I have not just pointed fingers, instead I proposed a new model of a locally-owned PGE that would save over one-hundred-million dollars a year for all of us. As the Housing and Community Development Commissioner, we have added over ten-thousand affordable units in my time on council, and as we've talked a lot about, we moved six-hundred-and-sixty homeless people off the street just last year. We started an Economic Opportunity Initiative, and two-hundred-and-seventy-two small businesses last year took part. Average increased revenue for those who needed the most, eighteen thousand for existing businesses, forty-five thousand for startups. Whatever bureaus I end up with, if I am re-elected, you will end up with the exact same result from me. Honesty, hard work, integrity, innovation, and yes, a willingness when necessary to take on the big players who confuse their self-interest with the public's. Portland cannot rest until we have that truly great business climate, one built on fair taxes, predictability, and tied to those industries that make us unique. We cannot rest until our schools are funded, our people housed, and every child safe and secure. I will not rest until we reach those goals together.
Mr. Lister, please hold your applause. Mr. Lister, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. Well, this has been an experience and a lot of fun. In my opening remarks, I told you what I perceived to be the status quo in Portland and asked whether we can continue to accept it. The status quo, I believe, is represented by the professional politicians here today. I don't think we've been well-served by professional politicians. I don't think the founders could have envisioned professional politicians. The founders had a different view of public service. Public service was a hardship. Public service was a burden. Public service was good-hearted people making the sacrifice of leaving their personal endeavors for a time while they worked for the community. My memory of Portland politicians goes back to Terry Shrunk, but my personal favorite is Bud Clark. Bud Clark, an ordinary shopkeep, a citizen, a taxpayer, who left behind for a time his own life and served our community. Like the founders envisioned, his heart was for the community. He was a careful steward of our money. He served two terms, and then he passed the torch. You may have already concluded I am not a politician. I don't seek a political career. I am beholden to no person, group, or special interest. Out of love for the community and belief in my abilities, I seek to serve. Our commission form of government calls for the city commissioners to be both legislators and managers, and I am, above everything else, a good manager. In two thousand and three, I recommended to the council a different approach for fixing the failed water billing system, an approach which could have saved millions. My advice went unheeded, and the new system is now three months late and six-hundred thousand over budget. In two thousand and five, I helped draft an economic development plan for Portland's small businesses, which would have helped to ensure their success. Little has been done to implement that plan, and our small businesses continue to flee. As a city commissioner, I would be most interested in having transportation and BAS in my portfolio, sorry, Sam, if you're out there, so I could help better manage those huge capital projects and see that our local businesses got their share. Above all, I want to bring common sense and fairness to City Hall. I'm in this race to advocate for you, the citizens, the taxpayers, the families, the working folks who are struggling to make ends meet, and the retired folks trying to keep their homes. I'm here to advocate for that great unheard majority that exists in the middle, somewhere between the two poles of the status quo. I'm Dave Lister, the East Side Guy, and I'm asking for your vote.
Ms. Burdick, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. Elections are about choices. Have you, as you've seen today, clear differences exist between the candidates. Let me focus for a moment on the differences between me and Commissioner Sten. The first is one of background. I have spent my career in the private sector. My service in the State Senate has been extremely fulfilling, but I have never been a full-time politician. Commissioner Sten, by contrast, has no private sector experience. He has spent his entire adult career in City Hall. The second has to do with our records. I have a record of success both in the private sector and in public service. Commissioner Sten's career in City Hall has been marred by failure after costly failure. He has been so focused on pet projects that he has, to paraphrase his own words, failed to mind the store. The third difference I see between myself and Commissioner Sten is the most important. It's a fundamental difference in our approach to doing the public's business. I have a collaborative, a collaborative approach to problem-solving. I'm a team player, not an ideologue. Using this approach, I joined with three colleagues to craft the landmark methamphetamine package passed by the two thousand and five legislature. Our meth work group, two urban Democrats and two conservative Republicans, put ideology aside and focused on the best strategies to deal with the devastation of meth. The result is a law that cuts off the supply of precursor drugs to meth labs and focuses the state's resources on proven strategies, such as drug courts, to get people off meth and into productive lives. On the issue of gun safety, I worked across party lines to get bills through both the Republican Senate and the Republican House requiring criminal background checks at gun shows. The measure eventually was passed overwhelmingly as a statewide initiative in a campaign that included many responsible gun owners. Both these important public safety measures would have been impossible if I had written off Republicans or gun owners as bad people. Instead, as a non-gun-loving Democrat, I work collaboratively with them. Commissioner Sten's approach is quite different. He is not collaborative. There are many talented and experienced people in Portland who tried to warn him about the Water Bureau, the tram, the folly of covering the reservoirs, and the inevitable failure of the city's costly attempt to buy PGE. Commissioner Sten did not listen. In Eric Sten's Portland, only some people are welcome at the table. In my Portland, everyone is welcome at the table. In my Portland, it doesn't matter whether you're from a private sector, a neighborhood group, a union, or anywhere else. If you are willing to roll up your sleeves and help to solve a problem, you are welcome in my Portland. But the choice here is what kind of Portland do you want? I ask for your support and for your vote on May sixteenth.
Ms. Boils, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
There are three bureaus that I would most prefer to work with as a city commissioner. First and foremost is the PDC, because we have to completely restructure the PDC in accordance with the City Club report of last year. Also, because the PDC is out of compliance with the anti-poverty act, and part of my job as commissioner will be to resurrect of a regional community action commission. Secondly, I'd be interested in continuing to be the Metro liaison for the City Council, which is supposed to be Mr. Sten's position. However, in that fifteen or so meetings I've been to this year, haven't seen anyone from him or his staff at those meetings. And thirdly, of course, I would ask to be the liaison for the Regional Arts Council as a musician and a writer. That said, I think it's important that all of those bureaus are told one very important thing. We don't have enough money, and we're not using the resources that we should be using to bring that money to Portland without taxing people further. Mr. Lister, and I, I think would agree with that, the small businesses have to grow, so we have more of an economic base here. However, Mr. Lister has not had the pleasure of some of the management and working with the nonprofits and the national organizations to bring the money to Portland. Ms. Burdick has done an excellent job. She's worked very hard with nursing moms. She's worked very hard on education and meth in the legislature, but the reality is, is that Ms. Burdick has made a commitment to the people of Portland till two thousand and eight to stay in the legislature, and we need to continue her work there in order to represent, continue representing the work of people in Portland. But let's focus on the incumbent. The incumbent has repeatedly said through this campaign, "I need more time." He's had twelve years. How much more time does he need? Portlanders cannot give him more time. We cannot wait for more clean air, affordable housing, and energy plan for all utilities, or more importantly, jobs. We cannot wait for solutions to take years to solve, such as the Water Bureau. When the Water Bureau crisis happened and we had lots of data to put into the computers, all it would have taken is one phone call to one agency, and within hours, the regional Title V people would have had seniors who needed jobs paid for to come into our city offices and put that data in. And if Mr. Sten says he doesn't know what a Title V program is, ask him what other resources he doesn't know about that he hasn't been using for twelve years. We cannot wait. We cannot wait for him to, to be there for key consumer protection votes, to discover that he forgot one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars in the annual homeless plan. He cannot, we cannot wait for him to deal with reservoir covers or all the other mistakes we've heard about. I don't make those kinds of mistakes. I ask for you to allow me to perform for you in the quintet of Portland Symphony as city commissioner. Thank you.
And thank you to all the candidates.
Good job. Had the one-armed paper hammer there.
Thank you to our candidates for an energetic debate. Special thanks to our moderator, Peter Steinberger, our panelists, and thank you all for being here, and we're adjourned.